... One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight we have a scheduled public hearing on forty-five Union Street, which is two oh-two dash six dash seven. And we now have all, well, mail-in's been done?
Um, I would like to refuse myself. Uh, don't go. I haven't received anything. I'm sorry, I'm representing.
Okay, you can just, if you could just state your name.
Sure. Christina Romano.
And you're representing the Romano subdivision of forty-five Union Street?
Yes.
Okay, so we get our mail-in's back?
Yeah, so twenty-five went out, thirteen came back signed, and one was returned to sender because it was rental property and no one's longer there.
So that's thirteen, that has.
When did you mail it?
Last Wednesday. Two weeks ago.
Three weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Or one week ago?
Two weeks ago, my apologies.
Oh.
Two ten.
So you have.
Two ten.
That's enough to open up.
Well, it's enough, it's enough survey for, for, I would call it, to provide the notice, so. We'd like to see a better return, but people don't pick up their, you know, certified mailing or, you know, sign from them, that's.
So. We did receive, uh, well, we'll also open, I, we want to be open to public hearing. Do you have a comment, second in all favor that? Aye. Okay. So we did get an engineering report back from, uh, Langatelli on the subdivision. Um, could you comment on that?
Sure. Um, so we went through all of the letters that were received from, uh, Opposite Park Separation, Historic Preservation, and then Orange County Park Defining. Looks like there are no concerns with the subdivision of the lot. Um, we had made some comments on the last supplemental about putting, uh, notes about moving utilities, being easements around them for access from one lot to the utilities that run through the other lot. Um, we understand that the, uh, the utilities might be moving, some of them might be moved, some of them might be moving services to the buildings. Um, so we sort of recommend that, um, the site hands could be a clue based on some conditions. For subdivision plans. Can be a clue based on, uh, initial, um, items. So, uh, that's the second part of the letter where I have the bullets. So it shows the location for the relocated, uh, existing water service in lot two. Um, the easement for that should be reviewed by the attorney once that's reviewed. Um, and then the plan should have a note stating who's actually responsible for, uh, moving that utility.
Yeah. So it's, the attorney's drawing up the temporary easement for the existing water main. Um, the applicant, uh, the Romano subdivision, they're gonna abandon that current water main and, um, add their own. They're gonna abandon it and the new owner, you know, can choose to use it if they want. And all of that will happen during their construction, during their building.
Okay, so I would say any of that information would have to be included on the plans in order to be.
Yep, it's being drawn up and it will be recently.
And we still, and we, you did mention that we got, you know, a letter back from Orange County Planning, but we also got a letter back from the, um, historic, uh, New York State Historic Preservation. Uh, people that had no objection to this or concerns. So at this time, I would like to, uh, open it up to the public if you have a comment on this. If you could just stand and state your name, or if you, you know, just, if you'd put better settings, you could sit and just state your name for the record and let us know.
Go ahead. All right. Um, I'm Joe LaFrie, so I live at fifty-five Union Street, right across from the property. I just have a couple of concerns. Um, I just got the letter, I just actually picked, went down to the police office today, so I wasn't really prepared. My concern is, it's a corner lot, and I just wanna make sure that, because we have kids, we have a little kid to look at, 'cause I've got two myself, we have a bunch of it back. We have scooters, we got bicycles, I just wanna make sure. I, I wanna make sure there's no variance gonna come into play, 'cause they should be fifty feet from a corner lot, because it's the safety of the kids. Meaning anytime, anyone gets to turn into that Mason Street, it's a big, it's a big deal, and come around that other end. So my concern really is, if you're gonna build there, make sure the fifty feet back, I think that, if, if I'm incorrect with the notes, fifty feet back and twenty-five feet from the front, or possibly fifty from the corners, is that correct?
Well, the house needs to be constructed according to the setbacks that are in the code. I don't know specifically what the ones are, but I think that it's a twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five foot. You got a side yard on a corner lot is twenty-five feet.
Isn't it? I thought it was fifty when it got with a corner lot from.
Lot width is fifty, uh, in corn, side, side on a corner lot is twenty-five feet, rear yard is twenty-five feet. So they, I'm sure, Kevin, can you comment on that?
Right, the access is gonna be off of Mead Alley, not off of W Union Street, so.
Excuse me, I think he's talking about site, uh, site clearance as far as making corners. On a corner lot, it says fifty feet, fifty feet diagonally, nothing obstructive visual turn in code.
In the zoning code.
So that, no, it's in the zoning law.
Right, but the plan that's presented to the board meets those setbacks?
Does, I, I don't know that, I just got, I wanna make sure it meets those setbacks. My concern was I don't want a variance to come into play after, because, you know, it, it's the safety that I'm concerned about. I don't need some, the clearance needs to be there for the kids, for just the public in general.
Well, there's no construction proposed at this time on the lot, so the lot itself, adding the proposed location of a, of a, of a dwelling meets the code. Um, if someone wants to come in, if anyone wants to come in and build, and wants to, uh, build closer to the side lot, they would have to apply for a variance before they get a building permit. So it would, it, 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 it's not gonna preclude anybody from coming forward and asking for a variance, but right now, as we sit at and look at it from the perspective of a, of a new lot with nothing being built, just a, you know, showing that the building can fit, a, a house can fit on the lot and still meet the code, uh, that, it meets the code.
That's fine, I just wanna, whoever is going through contract, they are aware of this and it's to be noted, so there's not any surprise, is that they come into this thinking that they're gonna be, you know, 'cause it's gonna be, it is a big issue down the line. I mean, I have no problem with being divided, I just wanna be sure the safety around in that area, that's all.
I assume the reason why it's being divided so it can be built on it.
Right, which is, it's gonna.
Obviously, they're gonna build on it, 'cause that's the reason why.
Ultimately, it's gonna, you, you can almost be assured there's gonna be a house built, but before that house has to, before that house can be built, it has to apply for a building permit, it has to meet the setbacks. It has to go to the AHRB, 'cause this is the, in the, um, historic district. So the materials being used for the house has to be approved by the AHRB. Um, so, yeah, there's enough controls here, uh, before the building, you know, actually, any building construction goes up, that would, um, protect.
That's all, make sure.
The integrity of the district as well as the, the neighborhood, so.
All right, excellent.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment on the, uh, the lot, the subdivision, or, yeah, subdivision of forty-five Union? Okay. Through that, I make a motion to, uh, close the public portion of the meeting.
Second in.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think everything's in, in play here, I don't think it's, uh, what is it under secret, is it a name?
Well, well, yeah, you, you took, um, lead agency on an unlisted action back in January. Uh, so with the clearance from, uh, Historic Preservation, from the county, um, there'll be no reason why you could not issue a negative declaration tonight?
So to, I'm gonna do, uh, I'm gonna, uh, propose that we do a, uh, do a negative deck under, as an unlisted action or seeker. Can I get a?
Second in.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
And I'd like to also make a motion that we grant a conditional approval.
No, it's a, is it a motion or does it vote?
That was a vote, right? That was all listed.
What approval?
Uh, the other one is conditional approval, uh, based on the, you know, the two recommendations in Langatelli's report, which, uh, talk about the relocation of the existing water line in lot two. And, uh, no building prematurely issued for the new lot until such find that the water service is relocated.
Yeah, you want to add to that? Um, obviously, all, you, you, all review fees be paid to the village, uh, as well as that prior to any building permit being secured, that they must go to the Architecture and Historic Review Board and get a bit of appropriations.
Okay, so those are the four conditional, uh, conditions on approval. Want to make a motion to approve that?
Uh, a second in.
All favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the first order of all business is the KSH warehouse, which is proposed on two eleven dash one dash twenty-nine, uh, twenty-two. And here representing them is.
Jane Stedley-Asen, Divisionary Properties, and Jacob Anderson, against the question.
Um, so we have a letter from Langatelli, um, we just wanted to go through, is that, is that your name, lady? Um, so the first one has to do with the, um, fire access, uh, into the site, so right now we just have, um, the private road coming in. Um, Langatelli pointed out that for, um, we have a gross building area over a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet, you need, um, two access, two fire access points. So the intention is to use the second driveway as our second fire access. We'll have to cross the wetlands, but fortunately, right there, it's, it's fairly narrow. Um, so we'll just come through here and connect into this driveway here, so we'll have two separate fires.
So you, you say you envision all the trucks for the first warehouse going in through the, the, there?
Yeah.
And that's for the bigger warehouse?
For both warehouses.
Okay, and then what's the second one for, just for fire access?
Yeah, well, it would just be the second fire access, um, well, it would be the main driveway for the two offices, but it would also serve as the second fire access.
So, does that have to be dedicated to each property, because now you're, 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 you're sharing a common?
We're gonna have to do a cross easement between the two properties.
I mean, I, you, you are very close to the point-tenth of an acre of the wetland disturbance.
Um, we're already over, we know we're gonna have to do a lot of mitigation for this.
Well, I know this is a new issue that we, that was brought up by the engineer, but, um, I know you are right on top of the point one, one-tenth of an acre, one-tenth of an acre, from the past disturbance plus what you're deserving.
Right.
That's gonna kick you over that.
Correct.
Okay, so what do you envision that's gonna happen with the, uh, wetlands and the army corps?
So we are proposing to mitigate the wetlands at, at, um, factor two-one, so, um, so for whatever amount of wetlands we end up disturbing, so as of the point-two acres, we will mitigate one-four acres. Which is what our requirement should be doing.
Now, we have a letter back from the DOT about the access to the office buildings.
No.
Are they going, I don't know, again, have you been in touch with the DOT at all about that access?
We just received comments from the laser, um, on this project, so now that they are comfortable, now we're, um, we, we felt it was pretty sure to send it to the DOT.
Did the DOT turn down the survey housing?
Please, just, uh, this is not a public hearing.
Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry. I was just asking questions that I assumed you'd wanna ask.
Go ahead.
So, um, it was pretty sure to send it to the DOT before we had your consultant's comments received and addressed. So now that we are at a point where they're comfortable, now we give it its time to go ahead and send it to the DOT for their comments.
Um, so that's your, that's your proposed solution for item number one?
Correct.
Um, I have just something to point out about that access from the office side. Uh, the access really is concerning the larger warehouse, the one that's two hundred thousand square feet, so you need to make sure that whatever access there is for fire access directly links to that. It looks like right now you're tying into the fire lanes that are going around the smaller warehouse.
Okay.
Uh, but it would actually need to go to you to that other lot.
Okay. So we will, you know, we'll have to figure out how that's gonna come, I mean, 'cause they, they can't come around the building and, you know, and make us back up this way, but.
That would still be kind of considered that first access, so you'd need it to be that second access.
Okay.
And according to the code, it's, uh, states how far apart they need to be, is on the lot size and everything, so you just need to make sure that whatever access you're putting in needs to be part of.
Got it.
How do you envision the DOT, and I'm just, how do you envision if the DOT says no to that?
No to what?
To the entrance on, the fifty-foot right away, that they said no to, you know, for the senior house.
Okay.
How, what is, what are your plans are to, to move forward with this project?
Um, that's a good question.
Okay, 'cause I, I know you're in a situation where, you know, you have a large, two large buildings and you don't have the access roads to, to put them in there. So I just was, if you had any other ideas?
Yeah, I, um, you know, I haven't been the person representing the project.
Oh, right, true.
Um, fully up to speed, I just pulled in yesterday, um, so I'm sorry, I don't have that answer, but, um, we will definitely figure it out with our client.
Are the, are the buildings, the two warehouses gonna be sprinkled, sometimes?
Yes.
Did it, did it have to?
It has to, yes.
Okay.
So, number two?
Yeah, so I think we addressed that already.
Right, I thought too.
I'm gonna send that off to the DOT for their comments. Um, uh, existing sewer easement, there is no existing sewer easement. Um, I don't know why there isn't, but when that sewer main was put in, there was no easement ever created.
So you have a sewer main going through the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I mean.
Okay, that just wasn't my understanding from top of the DPDW superintendent, so, um, I think maybe we can coordinate on that over in a little bit.
I mean, Langatelli did the original survey and.
Yeah, I've been looking back to try to find that.
Right, so, uh, as far as the title search goes, there is no easement on that site. I mean, the, I think the applicant is happy to work with the village to rectify that, um, but as of now, there is no easement through that site. Um, we had a question about the stormwater outlet, um, pipe, which is. So, this is just a draught here, pipe is just a little bit too long. So what, um, we do is that pipe with N back here, and, um, and we will flatten the slopes on the pipe so that it will be at the top, but as high as it can be in a pond.
Okay.
Um, so there's not any sort of charge to the pipe.
Yeah, that was just something we noticed, looking at the plans and then looking at the SWIP report and the modeling and everything, was that water elevation seemed to be higher than right, uh, discharge elevation from right of the pumping system, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I'm part of your storm, the end of the pipe may be underwater, but it's gonna be a temporary condition.
Okay, um, and that, that was more of a general, uh, something that we found from a quick review, so it would be a matter of going through, making sure that all of your, that was all of your outlets.
We would, we would, we're through, definitely check all of those. Um, size of material of existing sewer main should be indicated on the plans. Um, you guys know what that is?
Okay, I can take a look at that.
Okay. Um, the water main profile, um. I think what happened there was it was mislabeled as a, um, existing pipe instead of a proposed.
I was noticing a little bit of.
Yeah.
Something that seemed to have mislabeled or just have been wrongly counted, so we'll just kind of double check that.
Double check that from a point of view, make sure. Um, all right, so then the rest of them are, the comments are on the SWIP.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna say, just for brevity, one through seven, you're okay with, we'll make those edits. Um, number eight, um, which talks about the sheet flow versus, um, um, flow through the riparian buffers. So those are actually two different types of sheet flow, and you can't, as far as we understand, you can't double count them, so that's why we only use one. Does that make sense? We can have it on my expression.
I, I was gonna say, I, I think that's more of a conversation of going, maybe go through that part of the SWIP end.
I mean, we, um, because we're using infiltration, we have a lot more, um, green infrastructure than we actually need on this, so we could actually get rid of the sheet flow not, uh, as a, as a method that's counted in SWIP, 'cause it's not really necessary, but we're just saying that we have it because it actually does happen.
Okay.
Um, and so that's it, unless you guys have any other comments or questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments at this time?
Uh, I did actually have an additional item after, uh, I wrote the letter, I was talking to the DPDW superintendent. Um, you are proposing to tie into an existing eight-inch water line.
Mm-hmm.
Along with KSH, uh, right, KSH, Route two-eleven.
Yeah.
Um, the water line along that road is actually a six-inch line.
Okay.
There is an eight-inch line, uh, that was done for the water line for Weaver Street.
Okay.
That has a stub on the end of it and a cap that could be extended to supply you with the water.
Okay.
Um, that's an option.
Got it.
For getting that, the correct sized water line for fire flow.
Does, does the eight-inch connect to the six-inch on, no, they're two, they're two separate?
Uh, they kind of run parallel for a little bit.
Okay.
But, uh, it doesn't, I don't believe it ties back into the six-inch, there's an eight-inch feeding that six-inch.
I see.
Uh, from the other side of the road, so, um.
All right, we'll talk to Buddy about that.
Yeah.
And figure out.
'Cause there may be other options available for tying in.
Okay.
But we just wanted to point out that we don't think that's a major time on that location.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
There's a gentleman with you. Jason Anderson, architect at ADG Architects. So we were asked to do a visual study on it and see what it would look like from the road.
Would you wanna see that?
Yeah.
Like to see it? Yeah, I would like to see that.
Okay.
I would hope so.
First. These are close-ups of the building. So essentially, this first one is the two hundred thousand square foot warehouse, and another is the one hundred thousand square foot warehouse, so what the applicant asked us to do was try to break it up and have a big building that looks like multiple small buildings, make it look more of a mix between office and warehouse. So what we did is have, uh, created some two-story office entry elements within, as well as windows and the wall, uh, all the way around, uh, the warehouse, this is thirty feet high, part of the, uh, to meet the, the zoning code, uh, but then basically broke the building up along that. So it's still basically that box, but we created some free slay areas, some, uh, the trees that you see here are part of the landscape plan, exactly as it would be.
You know, you know what I'd find to be very helpful, is what it will look like when you enter.
There's another one behind that.
Yeah. So this is actually, I'd say, from the farm stand. So what we did is we took the exact trees that the, uh, landscape architect laid out, so we've got, you take a look at the landscape plan, that's what all of these are showing, uh, the sizes of those as well that is on the landscape plan. And so this is, if I were standing essentially in front of those trees at the farm stand, looking at it, so the driveway entrance would be further in the street, now the front is channel, it's still further ahead.
Since you can't see from the road, what it will look like from the residence, from that on Weaver Street?
Sure.
Oh, I'll assume that's a question you wanna ask.
You can be a public attorney, you have plenty of time to comment.
Yeah, so this is sort of as you enter the building.
'Cause you really don't get to see that.
What is the distance between two-eleven and the first buildings back there?
Two-eleven and the first building?
Uh, 'cause that's what we're looking at.
That's what.
Two-eleven, what is the distance there?
So from that view.
Six hundred and eighty feet, roughly?
About six hundred and eighty feet to get to this first building, as this view shows.
Right, it's a long driveway.
That's right. Yeah, so that sits back into the, the wood setting right now.
Did they get a tenant?
I don't know. I know they're planning on being one of them, so I don't know.
Yes.
If they get to the other.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? No?
Jane, has there been any further discussion, I guess, this last month, about, uh, working with, um, the Hefners to move the entranceway so that the lines would pardon, uh, with the channel lane?
Um, I know that the question has been on the table and there has been no movement on the other side.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next one is today on Boyd Street, there's a proposed warehouse on important Boyd Street, at two oh-seven dash one dash forty-six.
So the board's not going to ask what it looks like on the back, or what it looks like from the residence who are gonna live and see this every single day? It's not a big deal, it just cares what it looks like from the front of the road, that you're not gonna be able to see to begin with?
Well, you know, I, I mean, I'll just say that.
My second in.
I get it, I get it.
Do you, 'cause you haven't asked?
Here, we've asked greatest meetings about screening Weaver Street. We have.
Okay.
It's a concern.
They can say.
I'm sorry.
And now we're doubled aside.
We put a warehouse in our business area.
My kids are gonna be screaming at the pool and they're gonna be looking at people having water.
Listen, if this, at some point, when the board feels comfortable, if, if the board feels comfortable, then we'll go to a public hearing, and at the time, at the public hearing, you can state whatever you wanna state about it. If you want to write to the board, I'll even entertain letters to the board, I've had other letters come to the board about this project, we can read them as well.
Okay.
Um, but it's a process we're going through right now, and, um, that's where we're at in the process.
We're just concerned, that's all.
Absolutely.
The water main is supposed to now, may come from Weaver Street, whose property is that gonna come through?
I have no idea.
I mean, you, I would assume you as, as a member, you would actually ask that.
Where the water's coming through on Weaver Street.
Yeah, if you're gonna make out now an access.
When our engineer goes to the DPDW guy and finds out where the, then we'll know, I don't know if she knows, probably her head.
My fault.
So let's, let's continue on with the Boyd Street.
Right. Um, so the first comment is similar to the first comment on KSH. It has to do with, um, the fire, um, access, uh, so the existing buildings are sprinkled, and the new building will also be sprinkled. So, um, yeah, I'm, I don't think the second one is, is necessary.
Based on what the board said.
You don't need the second access road for this.
That's what I understand, based on, based on all the buildings, every portion of the building, whether warehouse or office, everything being sprinkled.
Correct.
And so remaining under the sixty-two thousand square, or one hundred, one hundred and twenty-four.
One hundred and twenty-four, correct. Okay. Um, let's see, so, and then the next part of that comment talks about the access, um, all the way around the building, so you have to be able to reach, um, every part of the building, um, with like a hundred and fifty feet holes from the, from the fire trucks. So since the buildings will be connected here, we'll no longer be able to reach all the points back here. But the code gives you the ability to waive that as long as the buildings are sprinkled. And, you know, all access doors are spaced appropriately around the side of the building that's not, you know, completely accessible.
Gives who the right to waive it?
No, it gives the fire code official the right to waive it. And so we're going to ask for that waiver. The next comment has to do with the the site disturbance pushing an acre in size and whether we need to do a SWIP. I think that it probably just makes sense to do the SWIP at this point. Or we're trying to, you know, shave off areas of spur footage just to be on the acre. We're just gonna do the SWIP and call it a day.
Okay, and the comment that I had made about that, since this is a sketch plan, was really just to make sure that you have an area designated for stormwater treatment. Like a lot of snow storage areas or buffers or pavement or new parking. So I didn't see an area that really could be used for stormwater treatment.
I think we're gonna.
It doesn't mean there isn't one.
Put it underneath the pavement, do underground storage. Probably makes some more sense on this side.
Okay, so it would be a matter of kind of building that and, oh yes, I know it's still a sketch plan.
Yep, sketch plan. So, you know, once you are comfortable, I guess with this layout, we'll go ahead and do the full design.
One of the things I'd like to see, because there's a natural berm along this side of Boyd Street. It's pretty high in elevation off of the street level. And I'd like to see proper shielding on that berm maintained. And I think the building encroaches, the tip of that building, the corner of that building, encroaches a lot out towards the street more. And I think if you wanted to continue the shielding all the way up to the intersection of Boyd and the railroad tracks, you might have to scale back the building a little bit to make that shielding possible. Is there any, is there any slight concerns that we have for the railroad tracks, the crossing?
At the previous meeting, we had asked if there would be an issue with the railroad itself in the distance from the proposed.
I'm thinking that if we ask for the shielding, the screening, the screening on the berm, or if they continue the berm higher towards the railroad tracks.
I think we would want to know from the railroad company if that, I know it's not gonna infringe upon their easement, but I think, you know, if that's how comments from them, even though, just a letter saying that they don't care, or they do care.
So let me just understand what your concern is. Your concern that this building is gonna block possibility of the.
No, well, my concern about is putting proper screening along Boyd Street.
Screening, so you're screening the building from the neighbors?
So if you were to maintain that elevation along Boyd Street with whatever we decide to have a screening, I don't want to cause a problem with the screening at the corner of where the, at the intersection of Boyd and the railroad tracks.
Before we start talking about screening, Jason's also done an elevation on this site as well, so maybe we can take a look at that.
Can I, I just had a concern again about the snow in the water. So where's snow gonna go?
So we've got it shown here and, sorry, that's easy. So over here, next to this parking area, and then along here.
So it's right on Boyd Street, where the stream is?
Yeah, the problem, there already is water that floods that area. So now, if we're gonna put snow there, it's gonna, it's gonna complicate the flooding. I mean, that's already a very low line. But that's not.
You understand that we have this one?
I do not. Yeah, I do not agree with the children.
It's still with there, even that's enough. But, yeah, if we pile snow there, it will be.
But, I mean, I think the hope is with doing the stormwater management plan, some of that flooding will be addressed with the underground storage. You know, we'll give it a place to go.
So a lot of it comes right off of here now.
Right. So we will be mitigating that before it closes down.
But you can't judge how much snow you're getting. Like, what if we get two feet of snow and and your stormwater drainage doesn't handle it where there, do you know what I mean?
I mean, when it snows, it doesn't.
Or the stream overflows or.
Well, that area's prone to flooding.
It is prone to flooding.
Well, there's a dam there.
Yeah. There's a dam.
Yeah, two, I think, yeah.
I mean, it looks that on paper saying that on stormwater we'll take care of it, but then real life happens, it doesn't look like that at all.
So it's two things. There's snow removal and just the runoff in general for the park lot, because you're gonna be paving that park lot, I understand?
It's, this concern came up with someone else and, you know, having the snow actually removed from the property, that you have to make the snow be removed. I don't see any other solution.
What about a porous parking lot? That might help also.
Not if you're gonna pile them on.
No, not, no.
I mean, there's.
I mean, for.
You can see snow that's still piled up in places and we haven't even had a lot.
Exactly. Yeah, that is, I do not agree with the snow.
There is an option to put a note on the plans to note that snow will be removed within a certain number of hours.
Oh, from the study, yes.
Are there any other sites in town that we do that with right now?
Well, we don't, I don't think we have anything that looks like this.
No, they're from the force. That was a discussion.
No, I'm just asking, because where do they take it?
I just know the village, the village has a command.
The village takes the streets. Where do they take it?
They take it off the streets.
Yeah, they clean up the downtown area, they take that, they walk back to to DPW garage, they let it go into the river or something, I'm not really sure.
So would our client be able to do the same thing?
I don't know, we have to look at the logistics.
Never heard something like that.
I think what the planning board's saying, Jane, is there's a wet spot down there and they're just bringing it up to the intention because in case of a situation. And the same with the screening on the top, I see that the plan up here, I can see this elevation, this is the one you're referring to for the screening out here? Or is it this one?
That's, yeah, that's that.
So this one, so this building is the new building? And that's the front of the building that's over here?
That's, well, that's the view that you would see.
See from the road.
That's the view.
This is the view.
This is the view. That's the side view. So that's coming out more.
Yeah, because this is the view you see from across from the post office right there.
Yeah, so that's this view, but this up here around the corner is this.
That's exactly right.
So they'd be clearing this area, which is all wooded right now.
And it's a hill.
Well, part of that was, this is a view shed study, like the other one, which we showed the actual trees and landscaping, because it's not there at this point. That's actually showing you the elevation, what it would.
Well, this is a hill.
So this is, you're planning on knocking a hill down and then having it round?
No, that's just to show you the elevation of the building. So that's not a view shed study, which actually shows the existing contour there at the, at essentially this berm that comes up here. That's not, that's cut back and the trees were removed in order so you could see that elevation.
So that's not what it actually will look like?
Well, it is.
Unless it flattens.
Well, not really.
So you have to think of that building is up higher.
Why don't you put, flip it around?
I'll explain it.
I think what you need to do is render a picture of what is existing and then put your building in.
We did, we did. Okay, so here, what you see here, this is the elevation you can see is that you just passed the tracks, right? And then this is, would sort of be that front end for you. The intent from the client was to make it look more like a storefront instead of a warehouse at that point. Then you wrapped a corner here, and we had a view that showed all the trees that were currently here, but that's, then you don't see, you don't see on the building here. So this wraps around a corner and then you see it continuing there the rest of the way. So what's not shown here is this, you notice this building's actually.
The existing building's longer.
It's, this is four feet higher, right? Because we've got loading docks on the side. Alright, so similar to what you have here, the building is up, so it actually comes out at grade up on a higher level. So what you're not seeing here, though, is this berm grows up much higher.
Okay, so that's what I would like to see. I would like to see what's existing with your building on it. All the way to the corner, how you're going to put the building in. I, it's beautiful, it's a beautiful building. So now we got to see what it's going to look like. But now I want to see what's existing with the building. Now, it's graded down.
So a part of that would be, once the landscape architect does his work to determine the trees that are there, because to construct it, many of those are gonna have to come down and not survive if you don't. So then new trees need to be planted. So once we have that, similar to the other, we'll show the actual plantings that are there with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, calling more views from the street too.
Yeah, so.
That would help us with the screening.
And you will put the buffer, you will put the lawn trees.
So is that the picking the buildings to the left that are now gonna be fixed up?
This is actually a renovation, but what we did is reanimated this building. So it's not that mustard brown mix. And so went with the color pattern, which is a mixture of green and cream, and carried that through the rest of the building. So trying to tie the two buildings together. So they've got this odd diamond thing on the building, so we carried that through as a band here. Added the windows similar to what they have there. He was willing to, you know, try to add a little bit more to, you know, this warehouse. He's just expanding his existing story there.
And how tall is the new building really?
Same, 30 feet.
30. And where's parking then?
So there's parking, so you come up and you're, there's parking right here, and then there's parking here.
And that's on the site plan?
And then there's a connection between the two buildings.
That's existing, or is that?
Uh, no, the connection is new. So it's more than, I think, 12 feet of the existing building. So basically, it's an area for a workhorse to travel on the ramp, because it's gotta go up to the other level.
I know this is not, can I just ask where the building, which, the new building which started?
Another, another thing, with the fire access in the back of the building, they have to get a waiver from the fire department or from the fire inspector to eliminate that road in the back as long as it's sprinkled.
It would be on the fire code official to dictate what they would actually need.
I have more questions.
Yeah, you know, commenting, I'm turning doubts concerning about getting a letter from the railroad obstruction of their own site with a locomotive heading more, I think, tactile or something, I don't think they're gonna have any connection, but.
Where'd you put the dumpster? Dumpsters?
There's a couple of them. So you'll see some fenced areas here and here. So they're shown on the site plan as well.
Now, are they gonna go to private pickup?
I'm sure they do now, right?
They know that the village picked up, but the village does not go on private property, so that's why you see that enclosed, I don't know what you wanna call it, but it's where you put the garbage cans. So the village does not have to enter, so.
Jane, can you put that part back up?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. Alright, so, thank you. 99 Clinton Street is the next one. This is a proposed building on the corner of Union and Oral Street. It's actually 99 Clinton Street.
Assistant here, hold the plan. So there was one comment about the height of the proposed building. So now that we have architected, we can see that the average height is going to be actually 37 and a half feet, which exceeds the maximum height of 35 feet. So we are asking to refer to the ZBA for height clearance.
Why can't you lower the building to make it compliant? So they're asking for a grant?
Because. You need to keep minimum height inside the building. And because the grade of the site drops, it's the average rate. So, you know, on one side it's taller than it is on the other side.
Okay, so you're taking the average. So as the grade changes, you're doing the averages of the highest and lowest point.
Exactly. So here, we probably need it on the other side, though.
So what is proposed for the additional space on the third floor? I see there's two windows on that third floor.
Yeah, where the peak is.
Where the peak is. Yes, you can't lower the height. Based on the way the building's designed, you can't lower the height of the building. There would be a parking garage underneath the building, which requires a minimum height. You have your first floor of commercial space, which is a 10-foot ceiling. And then you have, you have apartments, excuse me, on the first floor you have the retail. On the second floor, you have the apartments, and you have basically bedrooms in the attic.
With no window?
There's bedrooms in the attic. So is that part of the second floor's apartments? Yes. So you have a second floor apartment, you go upstairs, and you have bedrooms. And there's, there's basically, there's four bedrooms. And I believe he's, I don't have a plan for him, but I think, I think he's planned, there's windows and a gate from the back. And I believe there's windows on the sides also, yeah. The variance you got was for four apartments upstairs, right? Did, I, did the zoning board of the field know if there was a third floor? Yes, yes. They had, they had the plans.
But they didn't have those plans.
Yes, they, they had, they didn't have those plans, but they, the building hasn't changed. The layout of the building has not changed. The apartments have not changed.
Well, no. So the entrance to the apartments was in the back?
Yes.
Okay, and the variance was to allow you to have four apartments in that building?
Yes.
And so on the back, my understanding was that the second floor was gonna be the apartments. There was not gonna be a third floor.
Well, it's, if you wanna call the, if you wanna call the attic a third floor, they call it a third floor, but those bedrooms are always there. That has not changed.
Well, he has to be referred to the ZBA anyway for the, if he wants this height variance. The ZBA can take it up with him and then, I guess, verify.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't just, we didn't just break, after we got the zoning, we didn't just change the apartments and put bedrooms in the attic. They've always been there.
Well, is that gonna be, when you say attic, is that gonna be a full-size second floor? Or is that gonna be, you know, cantilevered type of ceiling? In other words, so the second floor, the apartment, the bedrooms are gonna be, are they gonna be eight-foot ceilings?
They're gonna be full-size, yes. Some of the walls will, some of the outside walls will slug down a little bit. They won't be full-size. I mean, the architected are there for you to look at. I think, I was just on the assumption that the apartments put bedrooms on the second floor. I didn't know there was gonna be a third floor apartment. The apartments, the apartments are on the second floor. But the apartments that are on the second floor, their bedrooms are on the third floor.
But they're two-story.
So basically, two-story. Two-story, yeah. I didn't.
I didn't know that either.
Conversation, but again, that. We'll refer to the ZBA. We have to for just the height variance in general. If they can comment on the third floor addition to the second floor apartment.
Can we say here how, how, you're the new event, Dolan.
Say it.
You're in the, you're upstairs, and Jane, you're in the building too. How, how high is the old bench? How high is that building? How tall is that building?
Which building are you talking about?
Well, your office, your offices are in there.
Oh, the office? I don't know.
I just like.
It has a, um, it has a first floor and a second floor, and then it has a, it has a parapet coming up on the roof.
So you were trying to get perspective?
Yeah, just perspective, how much taller it's gonna be, cause again, it's, like, it's like.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if you wanna go around town and look at all the buildings that exceed the building, right, there's, there's, there's a lot of them. I mean, predated zoning, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I, I think what you're talking about is, does it fit in? Isn't that what you're talking about?
Well, I want to see comparison to, I want to see comparison too, to the building, and, yeah.
I still, you know, and I, I still, I was just looking at the master plan last night, cause we're looking at different parts of it. And I see, like, the building designs, uh, there, you know, we don't have the design guidelines, but there is a building design of how a traditional house, a building is, is done in the village of Montgomery. And I looked through it, it's like, there's nothing in there about siding like this. It's all shipwreck, it's all, it's all horizontal siding, nothing vertical like this, so. Um, you know, planning board doesn't have any jurisdiction over that, but I'll just say it. Well, you know what it is, it's a ma, we, we had that old horizontal, and it looked like a zebra, and we broke it up. It's, it's too big a building to have all this whole horizontal siding on it. And, you know, when you, when you put a s, a paint scheme to that, it's gonna look beautiful. And that's just basically colonial shipwreck siding. It's not like a.
It's gonna be taller than all the old, the buildings though.
Pardon?
It's gonna be much taller than the, all the other buildings.
It's good, no, not, not much taller, it's gonna be two and a half feet. It's not.
But this, the way it looks, it's gonna dwarf the rest of the.
Well, no, I mean, it's gonna be taller than the building that's right next to it.
Yes. And.
Significantly.
By, by two and a half feet, that's like, uh.
The ZBA will have jurisdiction over whether they grant the height variance or not.
Right.
Obviously, you can't proceed with this plan until the ZBA chimes in, whether they say yes or no.
So we have the ZBA.
That's mine.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Alright, um, we are the, we're next from last meeting, um, January 26th. Could you give most of the group those minutes, if that's ever written?
I'll make them.
Okay, I'll favor that part, and you second it. Who's second it?
We both said it, and you missed it over there.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So who's your second?
We both, we should have our business.
Okay, you're in the second.
Yes.
And I'll favor that.
Aye.
And then the last one's to adjourn, so we'll take most of the time.